It's seven o'clock and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on June 12th, 2017. As always, we will begin our meeting with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Henry Lippman in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. For the record, we'll note that ten minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Bowles?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Baer?
Present.
Counselor Hamel?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Yeah.
Because I didn't hear every name.
I lost track on that one. I'll go with present, I guess. Okay, let the record show that all six counselors are present tonight, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. We'll also note for the record that the City Council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and presumably by Finance Director Donna Woodham.
She's checking into an air conditioning condensation issue and seeing what we need to do right now, but she'll-
Okay, so emergency service.
...as may be assigned.
She's been pressed into, okay. First up, we have several sets of minutes. Before us tonight are the regular and budget hearing minutes for May 22nd. Those were submitted to the council in writing on May 25th. No changes were sent to the clerk's office, so unless there are any changes to be made at this point in time, I'm going to declare that the minutes to both meetings held on May 22nd are approved as submitted by the city clerk. Secondly, we have special meeting, had a special meeting and a budget hearing on June 5th, and those minutes were distributed to the council on June 9th. Again, no changes have been received in the clerk's office, so unless there is any objection at this point in time, I'm going to declare the minutes to both meetings that were held on June 5th have been approved as submitted by the clerk. Consent and action calendar. We have four items on this consent and action calendar tonight. First one is on page 20 of your packet, and this is a temporary traffic order for this year's Laconia Main Street Farmers Market, not to be confused with the City Hall Parking Lot Farmers Market. Reoccurring item, no changes from past years, so a motion would be in order to approve temporary traffic order 2017-08 for the Laconia Main Street Farmers Market and to waive vendor fees. Moved by Counselor Bullock. Is there a second? Counselor Doyle seconds that motion. Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Next up is on page 22, and that is a traffic order for the other farmers market, this one located in the City Hall Parking Lot. Again, an annual item, no changes. A motion being ordered to approve temporary traffic order 2017-09 for the Laconia Farmers Market, made by Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that is approved. Next up, we, on Monday of Motorcycle Week, we're still approving Motorcycle Week things. Page 24. A request to use property located at 691 Indicott Street North, the Tamarack Restaurant, as a temporary parking lot during Motorcycle Week. It was not submitted through the normal process before the deadline. That's why it's coming to us. Planning Department is in support of the application. So this is something that's been done before. No changes from the 2015 request, so a motion would be in order to approve the request to approve the use of property located at 621 Indicott Street North as a temporary parking lot during Motorcycle Week, including the conditions listed in the 2015 Special Events Review Committee approval. Would you like to make that motion, Counselor Doyle, since it's your neighbor?
Second.
And somebody seconded. Counselor Bullock seconded that motion. Any discussion? Counselor Hamel?
All fees have been paid. I can't say that 100 percent until the approval here, but we will certainly be collecting them, yes.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Lastly, we are on page 27. Request used property located at 5 through 17 Veteran Square, that's the train station for a bike show and slow race as part of Motorcycle Week events on June 15th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., was not, again, submitted by deadline. We've done this for years and years in the past at that exact same location, so I'm assuming nothing has changed. So a motion would be in order to approve the use of the property located at 5, numbers 5 through 17, Veteran Square, for a bike show and a slow race as part of Motorcycle Week events on June 15th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., including the conditions listed on the 2016 Special Events Review Committee approval. Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bowles. Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries as well. Thank you. Okay, we're to citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place on tonight's agenda for anyone who is with us tonight who would like to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone here? Mr. Mayeau?
Yes.
Come up and introduce yourself formally for the record, please, and tell us why you're here.
My name is Richard Mayeau. I own Aquamarina over off of Scenic Drive in Lakeside Ave. I don't know if you're familiar with it. We have six children, 13 grandchildren. Most of them live here in the area. We own several properties throughout Laconia, and the reason I'm here is because of my beach. I have a sandy beach that we're quite proud of, and it's being destroyed. It's being destroyed because the City of Laconia's drainage system has failed, and it's been going on since 2013. I brought it to the attention of several people, including Paul Monahan. We've discussed it numerous times. It's, the pipes either deteriorated or falling apart, I don't know which. It's underground. I don't have x-ray visions. To kind of prove what's going on, I brought several pictures, if I may pass them around.
Give them to the clerk there, and she can distribute them.
Now, I have one in here that's my favorite, that doesn't really pertain to it, but you'll run across it. Okay. They're not in order. You'll see that some of them are the beach with lounge chairs in it, and then as you progress, you'll see that the beach is destroyed, and right now it's basically underwater. Of course, we've had 95-degree weather recently, and it's kind of dried up, but basically my people can't use it, and I've tried everything. I called, I've met with Wes, I've met with Paul Monahan. There's an easy solution. It's about 125 feet of 18-inch ADS pipe that can connect to their, to the city's drainage and connect to my drainage that I placed at a cost of $135,000. That $135,000 was not of my doing. It was due to the fact that the Village of Winnipeg's drainage system failed. There was numerous lawsuits going back and forth, had nothing to do with me, and their drainage used to be on the west side of Scenic Drive. Because of the lawsuits, their infinite wisdom, they moved the drainage to go on the east side of the railroad tracks. By doing so, that drainage could not take that water. Originally, there was just a tiny swale, about a foot and a half deep, if that, which was sufficient at the time. Once the water was rerouted, that water cascaded down the mountain, went through the railroad tracks, and into my property. My gray building, which we had restrooms and a game room, was constantly inundated with mud flooded out due to this. I got together with the railroad, because I couldn't get anybody else to do anything about it. Brian Lombard was gracious enough to work with us, and together we designed-
It's the Bureau of Ra- that's the Bureau of Rails you're talking about?
I'm talking about the railroad tracks, yes. They were undermined-
Say Brian, you're talking about the Bureau of-
Brian Lombard at Railroad.
DOT.
Correct. And those tracks were undermined three or four times to a depth of probably 30 to 40 feet deep. I was the original one who found it, and had the train gone by, we'd have had a catastrophe. I have pictures, not here, showing the track suspended in midair with nothing underneath. Together, Brian and I, we repaired it. One of the DPW persons had come down, and we worked together. I lent them my equipment, my men, and over the course of time, it occurred three more times, at which time Brian hired an outside contractor, because the breach was in different places along the tracks. Since then, we removed, you'll see the picture, the game room and the restrooms, because we intend to have weddings there, and you'll see a tent in one of the photos. That drainage, we put in 1,000 linear feet of drainage, 1,000 feet, for free, with my nickel, and it wasn't my fault. It had nothing to do with me, but it was the right thing to do, and I've done numerous other things in the city and never charged anybody anything. We're good people. My children liked living here, and I said, enough is enough. My beach is being destroyed. When Paul Monahan was present, I had offered to work with him. I said, you supply the manholes and the pipe, and I'll put it in for you, and he never did it. So this last go-around before he left, he says, well, does that still stand? I says, no. I says, my beach is destroyed. Now I have a $6,000 fence that I put up for the weddings. I have irrigation. The parking lot, it no longer exists. It's grass, nice grass for the weddings, and it's going to cost more money. I suggested that we could use a big excavator, dig down, make a small swath, and I'd lend the town my ledge truck, which they could go around in a 380, a 180, and put the material in my ledge truck, put the pipe in, backfill, and move on till it's done. Now, Wes and some of the other people in town will say, Dick, you're supposed to do it. No, I'm not. This is not my drainage, and even though my plans say that I'm going to replace drainage in the future, that's not now, number one. Number two, it's not the same drainage. The drainage that they want me to fix is in the street. My plans-
Which street is that?
I'm sorry, 95 Centenary Ave. So Centenary Ave, that drainage, approximately six catch basins drain all onto my beach. And we can circumvent that by extending the city's street drainage to my manhole, which I put a concrete knockout in. I don't expect everybody knows what that is, but it's a concrete structure, and I have a round knockout. You take a sledgehammer, you knock it out, and you insert the pipe. That, that's about 125 feet. It's only a temporary fix, because if I do go forward and build Phase Four, then we would move the street to the other side of the telephone pole, and then this is on Centenary, and the drainage, new drainage would be placed. But I'm not doing Phase Four, and there's several reasons why. I can get into it, but I think I'm a little long-winded here as it is. You probably have other things to do.
When you say Centenary Ave, are you talking about before it curves and goes parallel to Scenic or after?
Right at the curve.
Right at the corner?
There's a telephone pole right at the corner. I have plans here. I can open them up and show the board if you'd like. There's a catch basin, great in frame, right at that telephone pole. The next one up going south is the one that has the pipe that extends through my property and to the beach. That, that pipe is either deteriorated, I always thought it was CMC pipe, but it looks like it might be ADS. The manhole that you can see in the pictures, this is a family arena. We have small children, three and four years old. That's my favorite picture, right there. You found it.
Yes.
And anyways, that's one of my grandchildren. That's Princess Charlotte. Anyways, the drainage that goes across my property, if the city were to replace that, they would probably be down around 15 feet deep, undermine my swimming pool, et cetera. So I'm giving the city an alternate to tie into my drainage. I think it's a short, short money. It's goodwill, and it's something that I shouldn't have to do. Like I said, we're good people. We have a fine marina. I'd say it's the best marina on the lake. We have a nice little restaurant there, Beach Bar, and it's nice, and the City of Laconia should be proud of it. And our intention is to just continue to improve it. We're going to skip Phase Four, and I can get into that if you'd like, and we're going to move on to Phase Five instead.
So you understand, I'm sure that you're hitting the council cold with this tonight, so-
I am, and I apologize, and I only found out today at around 2:00 that you actually had a, a meeting this evening, but as you all know, the summer is short. People have to make their money to survive in a 10-week period. That 10-week period is shortened by Motorcycle Week. Every single year, I lose $35,000 at my beach bar and other things at the marina due to Motorcycle Week. The cars can't come in. It's just awful, but that's a different story.
Where would all this water be captured? Because it looks like it's seepage through the ground, through rocks and-
No, it's going, it's coming out of the, that catch basin.
Is it blowing out of the basins themselves?
The, that catch basin makes a 90-degree turn and goes along the stone wall and exit at one of the pictures that you see all the boulders.
Yep.
That's where it's supposed to exit. However, that's totally caved in, and my wall is coming down.
This here? There's another, another picture of the walls, but it looks like it's coming out at the base of that wall? Like here?
I'm sorry, that's looking down-
Looking down at the wall, yeah.
Yeah. That's looking down from that, standing on that catch, on that manhole.
So is this manhole of city's? The one that's by the wall?
I believe it is. It was present prior to me being there. When I met with DPW, one of their men, they says, well, we only do barrel blocks. We don't do pre-casts.
So all the water that's drifting across your beach is coming from that one manhole?
Correct. It's, it's not supposed to go out there. When I bought the property, it made a 90-degree turn and went probably 100 feet to the south. Did not exit there, but over the years, that, that whole thing is deteriorating, and-
So where'd it go then? It went 100 feet down Centenary?
No. I guess I didn't explain myself correctly. Centenary Ave has approximately six catch basins along the side of the street, which gets the rainwater because it's-
The first one of which is at the corner?
That's the first one, and they go up the street, and there's approximately six of them. That water gets all the water from Centenary and some of the side streets, and they come down, goes into the catch basins, and goes into that one that's at a T that goes out towards the beach. It never used to go onto the beach. It used to turn right and back-
Does that dump into the lake there?
Once it turns right, it goes about 100 feet along the beach, behind the stone wall, and then empties onto, into the lake. There's no more beach where it exits, so it's not, where it used to exit didn't harm the beach. But that would be an enormous cost. You'd probably be talking $50,000, $60,000 if you were to fix that. What I'm proposing is probably a $3,000 or $4,000 fix.
Where is your drainage in comparison to that one that's leaking onto your beach?
Mine is in the-
Is that what you're saying, to eliminate?
I'm saying eliminate that drainage, go to the, where the T is in Centenary, and connect to that, and connect to my manhole that is my grassed area on the east side of the railroad tracks and on the north side of Centenary. Did I confuse everybody yet? I'm sorry, but the best way is to have you come out, and I can physically walk you through it, but again, my problem is now, because I've, I've lost two weekends, and I'm going to lose many more. And not only that, because of the laws that DES has, in order to replenish the beach, I'm only allowed 10 cubic yards, and I'm only allowed that like every six months. I mean, every, is it six years? Something like that. And I've lost four feet of sand across the whole beach. I probably need 100 yards, and, but I need to stop this problem now, and I need to put sand there now so that my people can use it. I have, on weekends, sometimes when it's busy, 500 people in one day at the marina. It doesn't look it because it's big. I have 76 boat slips. We have a restaurant. We have other things. People are at the pool, so they, they kind of migrate all over the place, and so you don't, it doesn't really feel crowded, but they're there. And most of my people, in fact, all of my people, use that beach, and I've been getting nothing but complaints, and I don't know what to do about it. I've called numerous times. I've asked for the city to see if they can get an expedited permit, since it was the drainage that caused the problem, and call up DES and allow us to put the four cubic yards of sand there. I'm not asking a lot. I, I need to get this now, not in a month or two months. I need to have it like yesterday. I don't know what else to say. I could say other things. The pictures that you see of the building that's all torn apart cost me $27,000 to those four cadenas because they were destroyed when the city put in the new water system. They flooded those buildings. Everything got moldy. We had to rip out the carpet. City wouldn't stand behind it. They also, when they were digging in the street, pumped out the water, which was full of silt, into my foundation drains, plugged them up. That was a $10,000 bill. I had to dig up the whole side of my building and replace it, and put all new stone in, new pipe, new everything. Didn't get paid for it. My store, I was down the street, because the city didn't have the catch basin flush with the binder course when they did it in the spring, waited till fall, but left all the catch basins an inch and a half high, so no one drop of water went into the catch basins, but went all the way around to my boat ramp and flooded my store, not once, but 10 times. The city agreed to pay me $1,500 for the first time. I never saw a check, and then it reoccurred nine more times. So my store was destroyed. Everything that we had on the floor was junk. We had to throw it away. Nothing. So I kind of had it up to here, and that's why I'm here regarding the drainage. And I could go on and on. I don't want to bore you. I just want this fixed, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything that I possibly can.
Okay, we'll, I'm sure we'll, like I said, we're, you're hitting us cold with this tonight, and I'm sure we'll look into that, and it'll be of special interest to Counselor Doyle since it's in her ward, and we can have conversations with the city manager and the Public Works Department to get briefed on that end as well.
Well, I just want to reiterate, they're going to say that I'm supposed to build it. I'm not supposed to build it, and I have the plan.
Say that again.
The city will state that I am supposed to build the drainage. I'm supposed to build the drainage-
So the city's position is you're supposed to build the drainage?
Correct. My position is I'm only supposed to build the drainage for my new buildings, not repair the city's old drainage. My drainage is nowhere near the old drainage. If this is the telephone pole, this here is Centenary that goes around that telephone pole. There's a catch basin at this pole right here, another catch basin here, and they go all the way up the street. My manhole is right here. It would be easy to put a pipe from here to here and be done with it. The city's drainage at this catch basin goes like this, hits the drain manhole in the pictures, and makes a 90-degree turn and goes 100 feet towards the mayor and empties out into the lake. That's where it's gone for years, way before I was involved, and it's tired. It's failed. I just need to have it repaired, and I'm giving the city an easy solution on my nickel. I, I spent $135,000. That pipe that's, at that drain manhole is a 36-inch cover. That's this big. It's not a small pipe. It's a big one, and when it rains, the water goes through that pipe like a shotgun at the end. I have, I have a pool there. I've done everything that DES required, and it works, and we've solved a lot of problems. The train has not had a problem since. I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you for coming tonight, and like I said, we'll, we'll be looking into it.
All right. I am there at any time. Any one of you can call me and give you my number. My number is area code 603-234-3328.
3328?
Correct. That's my cell, and I'll return the call, and I will meet you at any time, night or day, seven days a week.
Except this week.
Except this week.
No, this week we won't, too.
We'll meet you this week, too.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else here tonight wish to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, we're on- is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay. We're on to interviews. We have a number of interviews scheduled tonight for appointments to boards and commissions. First up is Library Board of Trustees. There's one vacant alternate position on the Library Board of Trustees open, and we have one applicant, and that is Mr. Bruce Canoeur. Mr. Canoeur, can you come up and tell us where you live and why you would like to serve on the Board of Trustees?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I live in fifteen Orchard Street, and I have been a library patron since the day we moved into Laconia. And in the spirit of, I suppose, full transparency, I must note that my interest in the library has grown over the last three years in particular because my one son, our one son, has been the library page. And that has given me an opportunity, as it will, in about another twenty-five minutes, to go visit the library. And I've gotten to know many of the librarians as I pick Caleb up several nights a week. And I thought that maybe I could give back to the city in a very small way by serving as an alternate trustee, knowing that there was an opening. I realize that alternates are there primarily to stand in when regular trustees can't make the meetings. It's a great way to learn and to also provide a necessary quorum at those, you know, moments when others can't make it. As I said, I've been a library fan for a long time, and that's really the basis of my desire to serve if the council would see fit to appoint me.
Any questions for Mr. Canoeur?
I'd just like to thank him for coming forward.
Quite welcome.
One son, but many daughters.
[laughing] Yes, as the mayor knows, he's gotten to meet a few of them. Very good occasions, state championship photos and such, so. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
We appreciate your coming. Thank you. Before I go on, I should have said this at the top for all the applicants. By city council rule, we conduct interviews at one meeting and make appointments at the next meeting. We do not make appointments at the same meeting. So these appointments will come up again at our next meeting on June 26th, and you're welcome to attend that meeting if you would like, but it's not necessary. And so we won't be voting on any of these tonight. All right. Next up, we're talking about the Board of Water Commissioners. There's one position up on the Board of Water Commissioners at this time, and we have one applicant, and that's for reappointment, and that is Mr. Greg Page, who is seeking another three-year term. Mr. Page?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Page. I'm here tonight because I'd like to be reappointed to the Water Commission. I've been on the board for ten years now. I enjoy it very much. It's a type of community involvement that suits me fine. My philosophy is simple, and that is to make decisions in the best interest of the ratepayer. I like to think that over ten years, I've made a small but positive impact. And if reappointed, I'll continue to do just that. That's all I really have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Page?
It seems like it was just a few years ago I called you and said, "Greg, would you be interested in that?" But it's been ten years, huh?
Well, actually, you called me and asked if I was interested in working the polls, okay?
Yeah, that started it.
Being the moderator. So I owe you for that.
[laughing]
Don't come to my house anymore, Bob.
The refrigerator's closed?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Counselor Bolduc?
Yeah, I would just like to say I'm on the board also, and Greg is a very important person on that board, and really knows what's going on, so.
Good.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a great board.
Greg does a good job.
We're very appreciative of your service.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything everyone here does as well.
Okay. Thanks for coming tonight. Next up, we're talking about the Planning Board. On the Planning Board, we have two positions open at this point in time, both held by incumbents who have applied for reappointment. Charlie St. Clair is one of them, and he is not able to join us tonight, perhaps for obvious reasons. And the other one is Jay Tivna. Is Jay here tonight? I didn't see him. So I guess we'll pass over that. And finally, we have a position on the Weir's Tiff Advisory Board. One regular position up for appointment, and the incumbent to that position is Joseph Driscoll III. And Joe has applied for reappointment for a three-year term. Mr. Driscoll?
Hi. Joe Driscoll, 12 Maple Street. And yes, I've reapplied for a full term with the Weir's Tiff Advisory Board. I'm not quite sure what we'll be doing. We kind of shot the bundle on that last one. But I think it's very important that the board continue to meet, continue to have topics to discuss, continue to work the schedule, work on the list of desired outcomes, and so forth. So I would very much like to continue there and would answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions for Mr. Driscoll?
None. I serve on another board. He also is on the Water Commission Board and does an excellent job there, and he does work he's applying for tonight, so.
Again, we're very appreciative of your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes interviews tonight. And again, we'll be voting on these appointments on the 26th, as well as presumably interviewing Mr. St. Clair on the 26th. Okay. Communications, public hearings. No public hearings tonight for a change, no presentations, I don't believe. So we're on to the mayor's report. And quickly, I'll mention a couple of things. Ask the clerk to correct me on this if I get some of the dates wrong, but as those on the council are aware, perhaps people in our audience are not, both at home and on television, or at home and here in the audience. The governor's council approved our request to hold a special election for the open state representative seat that we share with Belmont. So it's just that one seat that was held by Representative Fisher. And the special election for that position will be held in conjunction with our city election on November 7th. If, this is a partisan election, unlike the city election, so there'll be room for Democrats and Republicans and independents to file as such. And if there's need for a primary, more than one person applies for that position from one or both parties. That primary will be held on September 22nd. That doesn't sound right. 12th. Sorry. Yes, September 12th. So the filing period for that election opened today, I believe, and at the clerk's office, and extends tomorrow. So if you wish to file, you can file at the clerk's office tomorrow for that position. There's a four-dollar filing fee. Is it two-dollar filing fee? Wow, I was, I doubled it, a whole two dollars to file for state representative. And if you miss that, I believe you can still go down to the Secretary of State's office through the end of the week.
Five o'clock on Friday.
Five o'clock on Friday, and file at the Secretary of State's office. So the filing here in Laconia is limited until the close of business tomorrow. Okay. The other thing I'd like to mention quickly, and I've said this before, so I won't belabor it, but we had the ribbon cutting on Sunday for the Phase Two of the Wild Trail, and had a nice turnout that included Councillors Bowns and Hamel. I appreciated them coming. And it was the first opportunity for a number of people to walk the length of the trail, which we did after the little ribbon cutting ceremony. And we had another little ceremony event down at Bartlett Beach. And I don't think I'm exaggerating a bit to say that those who in the, who had not been down to that end of the trail before were absolutely stunned and blown away by the condition of Bartlett Beach. It is absolutely spectacular, and it's just amazing what the contribution of the Wild Trail, plus the upgrade in facilities done by our Parks and Rec Department, have done to that facility down there. And I urge you at all, everyone, at their earliest opportunity to go down there and take a look. Of course, it was a perfect day weather-wise yesterday, and sunny and breezy, wind coming off the lake. There were, take my word for it, I haven't been to Bartlett Beach that many times, but I've occasioned it, and everybody was commenting that they had never seen that many people at Bartlett Beach before. And it was really a sight to behold. I mean, families were picnicking and kids, and you could see what people walking in from the neighborhood. And it was just a great picture-postcard scene. And it really is breathtaking when you first come upon the park and you have that vista in front of you with the Wild Trail opening up to the lake and whatnot. So I urge everyone to get down there. And I think, I think people are starting to see now the benefits of the whole program and what it is adding to our city and what it has the potential to add to our city in terms of amenity that not only people here will enjoy, but people will come from long distances to share as well, and will really be a boost to our tourism industry in the long run. So I'll get off my high horse about that, but I urge you to get down there and take a look if you have not already done so. Committee reports. We don't have any committee business tonight, I don't think. You have a meeting coming up, do you not? Didn't we not?
Not till July.
July, that's right. We were going to wait until after the... Okay. Counselor Lippman?
We need a meeting of the Finance Committee, which I think we can maybe do either before or between the next budget meeting on the 24th.
We have a special meeting next week.
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
And then we meet again on the 26th.
So I guess maybe it'd be the 19th that we would best fit it in?
We still start at six o'clock on the 19th, so we could either do it after that, or we could start at 5:30 and do the Finance Committee meeting on the 19th.
So why don't we do it after, if that's all right with Finance Committee members? We have, by policy, agreed that every other year, which is an odd year, that we would review the exemptions and credits for the elderly and what we offer. And we have a table of comparisons by community that we'll review and make a recommendation to the full council on for purposes of considering for the budget.
Okay. So Counselor Lippman makes a motion to schedule a meeting of the Finance Committee to discuss Item D, Expansion of Veterans Tax Credits, on Monday, June 19th, immediately following the special budget meeting.
I think that's actually a separate item. That's the one that would allow for the phasing in of the all-veterans credit over a three-year period. So it's a little bit different than what's on that multicolored sheet that I had at your desk for you tonight.
So we have to cover both items?
We have to cover both. The Senate Bill 80, which dealt with the veterans' credit, has been enrolled, which means it's passed both chambers and is in the queue for the governor to sign. As when I checked last week, it had not been signed yet. So technically, I'm not sure we can take action on that. And there's really no extreme urgency because the deadline for filing for any veterans' credit by state law is set by April 15th. So if we didn't get to it until August or September, we've got plenty of time for that one.
So do we need to add another item to the Finance Committee agenda?
Yeah, I think it would be the exemptions and credits. That's on the sheet, that's on your desk tonight.
The 19th, is there a budget presentation on that night, too?
Yes.
Yes, we start at six o'clock for the budget presentations.
Public Works.
Fire, Public Works, and Administration, I believe.
All right. Let's go back and change the order then. So Counselor Lippman's first motion then would be to add to the agenda of the Finance Committee, Item E, which would be exemptions and credits regarding the veterans' tax credit program?
And elderly and disabled. That deals with the blind and the elderly.
So do you have that, Madam Clerk?
I'm just going to run as tax credits and exemptions that may be available.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. Six votes in affirmative that carries. All right. Now, we're to the motion. Counselor Lippman moves to schedule a special meeting of the Finance Committee to take up Items D and E on June 19th, immediately following the special budget meeting of the Laconia City Council.
Just E.
Is there a second for that? I'm sorry?
Just E. We're not quite ready for D yet. The governor...
We're not going to talk about D. Just E.
Governor hasn't signed it yet.
All right. I stand corrected to discuss Item E, the one we just adopted.
If we could, we could discuss it, just we couldn't, we could not vote on it.
Wouldn't make a recommendation yet, not knowing that.
We could...
Pending the governor's signature.
A contingent recommendation, yes.
Well, they can discuss it.
Yes.
That wouldn't take effect till next year, correct? Next budget?
Correct. It would be next...
We're going to discuss D and A, D and E, and take no action on D.
Correct.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Bowns, seconds of motion. Thank you. Any discussion about scheduling that meeting? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in front of not meeting a schedule. Any other committee business?
Do we need Item C under Finance anymore?
We're going to do the final wrap-up of the tally to get to the cost and everything as we got it. I mean, the lights are all installed, but we're working with Siemens to tally the final cost based on the estimate, what the final census was. And they're also working with Eversource to get the data on the spreadsheets into the Eversource systems we'll get credited back. So we'll probably give you a wrap-up on that, I'm assuming sometime in July, maybe?
Okay. The energy savings rebates, is that in the process, too, or is that not done till after all this?
I think it all ties in with everything going in, and Eversource gets the final audit, if you will, the light audit of what got replaced and just confirms it. So I think that ties in at the same time.
Are they two of those or one? Is it fifty, is it fifty or a hundred?
No, there's one one-hundred-thousand-dollar rebate from Eversource.
So I thought you mentioned once we'd get it in two, two things.
I think that's just one. We're capped at a hundred thousand. We can't get anymore, but we'll...
Okay.
We had talked way back if we could do part of it in the last calendar year to get some and then get the rest of it the next. But it was per project capped at a hundred thousand, so we couldn't split it between the calendar years.
Got you. Okay.
Any other committee business? Liaison reports. Any liaison reports?
Yeah.
Counselor Bowns?
We, we had the public hearing. I'm not sure if I reported this with respect to the changes to the uses and...
We, the planning board?
We had a public hearing, and the Planning Board voted to recommend the council-approved changes relating to the church and relating to nightclubs. So...
And when will that be coming back to council?
I'll ask my, I'll ask the manager...
We can put it on for June 26th, and then you have the option of accepting the Planning Board's public hearing.
Oh, we know where that's going to go.
Or we can schedule our own public hearing.
We know where that's going to go.
You know, I'm...
How many people came to the Planning Board hearing?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Really? Really? You know, there was, there was nobody there from the public. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think of doing anything but having a public hearing here, even if nobody came, you know? I just think we ought to do a public hearing. Because...
Okay. Well, let's not argue that tonight.
Okay.
All right. Any other liaison reports? Okay. We are to citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda? No big rush, it doesn't seem like. Okay. And we are on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff and I will put together some background information for you on Mr. Mayhew's concern that he brought to you tonight. We'll get that to you as soon as reasonably possible. You do have two reports in your packet tonight. The first one is the financial and operational trends. Looking at the very first item on the top of page 43, it's the net gain in construction value, one of the components for our tax cap calculation. Again, the assessing year rolls over after March 31st and begins anew on April 1st, tied in with the Department of Revenue Administration year. So April 1st to March 31st. We're two months into it, and we have 6.4 million dollars in new construction, basically double where we were a year ago at this time. If we turn to page... If we turn to page 44, we continue to be busy in the Police Department and you'll see on page 45, also with the Fire Department, under Property Tax Collection, towards the bottom of the page, tax bills just went out, so we got a whopping $105,000 from those who came in and paid probably within the first day or two of receiving their bills. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tax bills are due July 5th, so you obviously will see the bulk of that. Revenue show up in the June numbers, but some will straggle over and come into the July numbers. See, you'll get a true picture by the time we close out July. Motor vehicle registrations, as I indicated, tend to be much stronger in the spring for a couple of reasons. So you can see with one month left in the year, we're running just short of 98% of our target, so that number's strong. And we're about $120,000 ahead of last year's pace at this time. So again, we think our numbers are conservative. If you recall in the budget I presented for next fiscal year, it's a much smaller increase and the lion's share of that increase relates to the added registration fee that the council approved a month or two ago. So we continue to be very conservative with those numbers. The impact fee figures at the bottom of page 45, you know, continue to trickle in, not at any great shakes, but they continue to roll in there. I'll turn your attention to the top of page 46. The non-capital reserve account, we've adjusted that for the wells that we're going to be placing up for, at the state property for Robbie Mills Field. We've received a draft license agreement from Administrative Services last week. Our legal team is reviewing it. We're looking for a quick turnaround time and Guilford Well has promised to slot us in as soon as we give them the go-ahead. So Mother Nature had been cooperating very well, although now we're into a little bit of a hotter and drier spot, so we're certainly going to look to move that along. And then the boat taxes are starting to fit up or to kick it up a little bit there and you can see that we're about 50% towards our boat tax target. People can register boats here as well as at the registered agents in Laconia and that money continued, lags a little bit. When we recognize our dollars immediately when they hit, we get it from the boat agents on a weekly or maybe bi-weekly basis. There's a little bit of lag there going into it. The second report.
Is that normal to be at 50% at this point?
With the, with the cold, wet spring we had, there wasn't any urgency on the part of a lot of people to do that. The other item that I try to bring up is there is the option to register your boat directly with the state and that was something new that rolled out a couple of years ago. We encourage people, if they want to keep their dollars local, to register here in Laconia because the lion's share of the money then stays in Laconia. If you register it with the state, none of that revenue gets turned back into Laconia on it. So if people want to have, you know, a better impact budget-wise in supporting the local community, we do encourage them to try to register it, register it here. The economic development report is in your packet as well. The unemployment numbers are listed there for the month of April, the most recent data we have. Everything from Laconia, Boundup County, Concord, Manchester and the state are all below 3%, a sign of a very strong labor market. And I think that's very visible when you look at the number of help-wanted signs and advertisements that are out there. There are a number of places that are really screaming for some seasonal help. On page 49, you will see we have four months of the Consumer Price Index Urban, which is the second component used into our tax cap calculation. Inflation for the month of April ran at 2.2%, so we're a third of the way through the year and we have the annualized number to date for inflation at 2.45%. We have Motorcycle Week kicked off over the weekend. Really want to give a shout-out to our staff. Really impacts just about every department in the city, you know, from Nancy Brown in my office administering the boardwalk rental spaces for the city and to our licensing staff going out and with the vendors and collecting the licensing. The Special Events Committee is made up of numerous staff departments, finance, tracking all of the money, Public Works, Police, Fire, Parks and Rec. I happened to be down there, I think Tuesday or Wednesday last week and we had the tractor out there with a beach rake on and they were raking the beach and kind of came around the lifeguard stands and they kind of fanned out and came in. It looked like the grass on Fenway Park with the way they were grooming and I thought we had beach art going on, but the beach looked fantastic, the improvements and, and staff really has this down pat. And again, I can't say enough about the effort on all of our staff and, you know, how well they just step it up and, and turn this event on and handle it very well. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions for the manager? Counsel Hamel.
As I was talking to you before you started the meeting about the number of vendors this year compared to last year, it looks like it's down a fair amount. Some of the areas are, you could see are vacant that were full last year. So I guess my question is with the budget that was approved for that event, are we going to be doing anything to make sure that we meet that budget and not overspend?
I have shared that with all department heads, that we look like the vendor number is down a little bit, although some vendors may just be rolling in, you know, today, tomorrow type of thing for the remainder of the week as they've come out of Americade and other places, right? So, but yes, we've stressed that. We've stressed that, you know, we need to be staffing to the conditions of the crowd and the weather and.
We're five days into it now, so if you start Friday, last Friday.
Yeah, Friday is.
Sunday, Monday, today's.
Friday's minimal. Actually, unless you're paying extra to vend on Friday, you're not vending on Friday. So the event really kind of kicks off Saturday. So today's really day three with the exception.
But I mean, we had the Safety Services Day at Friday, so.
In smaller amounts, but where the beer tents were and stuff, but again, some of those venues pay for their own details and stuff where they've got beer tents, they're paying for private details that aren't on the city's dime. So all of our staff is very aware of the cost, the ability for the city to reinvest into, you know, some of the net profits after the cost, you know, into, you know, capital purchases for the city. As you recall, what really drove it a couple of years ago was the increase in out-of-town police detail. A lot of those departments, by contract with their officers, we had significant rate increases, so that was the big driver a couple of years ago. But all the department heads are very aware of staffing and making sure that we're at the appropriate level, but that we're, we're watching where we are depending on the day.
Is the, is the out-of-town, out-of-town police, is that considered a detail for them or is it pay? I mean.
I think that's not a flat-rate detail rate for them coming in.
Reason why I'm asking that is, now, I'm not 100% sure on this, I could be wrong, but I heard through state police that their detail pay does not count for their pension. So what I'm curious is if the police that come here is a detail rate, are we paying their pension? Because I think last year, didn't we do that?
So we don't pay for any of the state police and the state police.
Correct. No, I understand that.
The state police that are assigned, I think, are part of their work assignment for the week, so they're not on a detail. When we are paying for the cost of out-of-town officers to come, we are paying the cost of their retirement contribution as well. So when you blend in the rate and the cost of retirement and the unemployment and the workers' comp component into it, that all gets blended into the rate and that does get counted towards the retirement.
Okay. Like I said, I may be wrong on this, but could we check in to see because state police and local police are all part of the same pension system?
Right. But again, I don't think the state police are here as a detail and we're not.
No, I'm not talking about state police. I'm just saying how I heard this.
Okay. I'm telling you for the out-of-town, the UNH officers and the county officers and the other, you know, communities that are neighboring us, yes, that is counting towards the retirement and we are paying that as part of the rate.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm saying is if there's something has changed that the detail rate is not supposed to have pension funds paid, are we paying that for extra?
I can tell you that nothing has changed in that detail rates are required to count towards retirement system and therefore we pay that retirement system cost.
So you heard that.
Something has changed and I don't know how recently or a while ago. It may not.
You work on a detail that income doesn't count toward your retirement base?
Detail pay, correct.
I don't think that's, I've never heard of that.
Like I said, some, I was, I was told that and it could have been wrong, so.
We can double-check, but even details that are going on like over at Meadowbrook right now for regional officers and sheriff's department employees, all, all the earnings they're getting there are tied to the retirement system as well. Those hours count towards their calculations.
Maybe they weren't supposed to be.
I will triple-check it for you, but I can tell you as someone who's been actively involved in the municipal association and specifically on the retirement issues, there really have been no substantive changes since about 2011 or 2012.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? Okay. We're going to move on to new business and the first item of new business is a request to approve a tentative agreement between the Laconia Police Commission and the Laconia Patrolmen's Association. For the sake of our audience, I will note that the, the city council, per New Hampshire law, has been briefed on the details of this contract, but we are not at liberty, as I've said before, to discuss those details as part of the collective bargaining process until after the contract or until the contract has been approved. So the only thing that we can say tonight is that the Laconia Police Commission and Laconia Police Association have reached a tentative one-year agreement, the total cost of which to the city would be an additional $63,476. And again, the details of what's in that contract are, are not for public consumption at this point as part of the collective bargaining process. So a motion would be in order to approve, to get on the table, the one-year contract that has been submitted, as submitted. Does anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Counsel Hamel, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Bolduc makes that motion. All right. So the subject is now open for discussion. Anyone?
Well.
Hard to discuss.
It's hard to discuss. However, we, we have, we did see the original proposal, which we did not accept. Am I still okay?
No.
No.
Oh.
They're not okay.
Why? It was at a public, it was at a council meeting that we.
No. No. We met in a so-called non-meeting privately.
All right, okay. I wish it was somewhere here.
So what we discussed at that meeting was not, is not for public consumption, other than what I've already said. So we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
I know we're voting.
Counsel Lippman?
Yeah. I mean, I think that, in that we can't discuss the particulars, I think we had concerns about the long-run cost implications of the, the form of, of contract and to make a motion not to approve that agreement.
Well, we, so that's a negative motion, so we need to vote this up or down. That's, okay. So you're arguing a no vote in effect?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the contract.
We've already, that's already on the table.
Okay.
All right. So we have, anyone else wish to weigh in on whether or not the council should approve or not approve this contract? Okay. All those in favor of approving the contract, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have two votes in the affirmative and four votes in the negative and the contract is not approved in its current form. So this matter now goes back to the Police Commission. All right. Item number two concerns a boundary line adjustment. This is on page 50 of your packets. Concerns a boundary line adjustment between the City of Laconia and the Del Gilbert Trust on Frank Bean Road. I'll recognize the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with the Frank Bean Road cleanup project that we did with the former burn dump, the city, as you are aware, ended up purchasing three parcels up there where we raised the structures and that allowed some cost savings even after the purchase of just having to bring in clean fill as opposed to having to dig out in some areas up to two feet of the material and pay for disposal up in the north country, which was a much greater cost of disposing those materials because of the contaminants that were in them. In conjunction with that, as you look at the map that I've provided for you in your agenda packet, down towards the bottom of the page, you'll see Parcel B as it listed, as it's listed. And that's actually a little sliver that runs in between the three city lots that was privately owned. So we're doing an identical square footage land swap for up towards the top of the page is what's listed as Parcel A. So Parcel A would be transferred over to the Delphus R Gilbert Trust and Parcel B would be transferred to the city in the boundary adjustment, which makes our parcels contiguous and just a little more user-friendly going forward. At the end of the day, all of our parcels will be combined into one parcel and Parcel A will be blended in with the Gilbert parcel and not remain a separate parcel as well.
He's, as I recall, he's using that as a driveway off of Frank Bean Road to get into their property.
Correct. If you look just above where it says Parcel A, you'll see in very small writing there somewhere where it says 20-foot access easement, just below the little rectangular grid there in the lower right corner. So he does have an access easement there to begin with, with the Jagir property. This obviously enhances that a little bit and comes down to the back of his, of his pit activities, if you will. So I think it's a benefit for him, it's a benefit for the city and in terms of the boundary adjustment, I'd ask for your support on this.
Any questions before we get to making motions? Okay. A motion would be in order then to convey from the City of Laconia, from the City of Laconia, a 50-foot strip of land that is 7,592 square feet to the Delphus R Gilbert Trust, identified as Parcel A and is a portion of current tax parcel 4763513 and to accept by conveyance from the Delphus R Gilbert Trust a portion of land that is 7,592 square feet identified as Parcel B and is, and is a portion of current tax parcel 4763511. I further move to authorize the city manager to execute any documents necessary to fulfill these actions. Someone care to put that motion forward? Counsel Bolduc, is there a second? Counsel Hamel, second to the motion. Any discussion? Counsel Hamel.
The only question I have, is there any surveying fees involved with this?
Everything is already done. So Steve Smith had already done this and took that out of the original 1.2 million bond, I think, that we did for the project.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. Note for the record that we have five affirmative votes. Counsel Doyle not participating in the vote and the motion carries. Next up, call your attention to page 52 of your packet, is a request to lower speed limits on Watson and Scenic Roads from the intersection of Endicott Street. I assume that means to the intersection of Lakeside Avenue. So we're talking about basically from the Tamarack down to the point where Lakeside Avenue becomes Scenic Road, correct?
No, I think we're, the speed limit reduction is starting at the bend of, can you, can you come up, please, Wes?
Mr. Anderson.
The post for 35 miles an hour begins after the, the intersection of, I guess you'd call it Centenary's Turn coming up. That's where it gets posted back up, so it would consistently bring it down to 30 miles an hour from there all the way up to Endicott Street at the intersection of Watson.
So where Centenary Avenue empties into, that's where the, where Lakeside Avenue becomes Scenic Drive?
Correct.
Okay. So from, from, it's from there all the way to the Tamarack?
Correct.
Okay. And right now, the speed limit is 35?
Yes.
And there's a request to make it 30?
Correct.
Any further administrative discussion or explanation?
No, it was indicated that is the approach coming in on Weir's Boulevard and coming in from 11B, the speed limits on the other approaches do drop to 30 miles an hour or are 30 miles an hour. So this would just be consistent with this approach or, or exit, if you will, as well.
I'll make that motion.
All right. So the question is, do we want to change it or do we want to refer this to Public Safety Committee for further study?
Change it.
Does this change it?
Just change it.[1793.13]
Just change it.
Okay.
He wants the speed.
So a motion would be in order then to endorse the change recommended by the Department of Public Works and change the posted speed limit for Scenic Drive at its intersection with Lakeside Avenue up to Endicott Street.
Endicott Street North.
Endicott Street North from 35 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. Okay. Somebody make that motion?
Sure.
Counselor Doyle, Counselor Bolduc, second's the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries, and the change is made. Okay. Next up, page 53, request to approve a letter of understanding, or memorandum of understanding, between the City Council and Laconia Board of Education regarding fiscal years 2018 through 2022. And the one change that I would note to this for the council's sake is there are no signatures on the page that was submitted to you, or no, it's not a signature form. And I had this discussion with the city manager earlier tonight, and also a brief discussion with Mike Pearson from the school board, who noted that the school board has already agreed to this memorandum of understanding and has also authorized the school board chairman to sign it on behalf of the school board. So when we make our motion tonight, we need to approve the language and authorize the mayor to sign the document on behalf of the city council. And that's not part of the document right now. It's the signature part. Counselor Hamel?
I don't know if this should be under the discussion part, but the second paragraph relates to the 850,000. I'm just wondering if somewhere near should also say that that's including the tax cap Because it doesn't mention anything about the tax cap portion of that 850. And then the third paragraph, which says the council agrees to support an annual $850,000 request increase to the portion of the net school appropriation that comes from property taxes for the Education Stabilization Reserve Fund. That's for five years. That's what we decided, and I don't see that on there. So unless...
Counselor Libman? I'm sorry? Why don't you take the book and use it, Mike?
If any of these original funds remain at the end of five years, they would revert back to the city.
But I mean, that paragraph doesn't specify that it's a five-year-only agreement. You know, the fund, the funds that you say are going to be returned at the end of five years, that doesn't specify what they're gonna... Am I wrong?
I think you are. No offense.
Okay.
I mean, I think the, the way this is intended to work is that the money that we put in, if it's not used within the five-year period, reverts back to the city's undesignated fund balance. Now, we heard tonight that the school board is also looking to contribute money into it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I think, I don't know, I'll have the manager weigh in. I think we've got this covered.
I'm sure he'll tell me.
I think to your concern about the five years, it says a rate of the very bolded underlying part is for fiscal years 18 to '22 that this is meant to be. So in the title, if you will, it's a five-year understanding. And then the third paragraph does tie into your concern about it includes the tax cap money, because it says the $850,000 is the appropriation from the amount that comes from property taxes and from the education stabilization account. So it's indicating that the tax cap portion is the first part is the property taxes, and the second part is the stabilization account.
And I know we've, we've talked about the semantics of this before, but technically, the tax cap, referring to the second paragraph, the tax cap does not control spending. So they're sort of like different issues. The tax cap only controls the amount that can be collected in property taxes. So the second one is saying gross appropriation of not less than seven, $850,000...
Will use the reserve.
Less than the year before.
Yeah.
Which is a separate issue really than, technically than the tax cap number. Any other discussion or comments or questions before we get to making motions? Can I have it back? Thank you. Okay. A motion would be in order then to approve the letter of understanding between the Laconia City Council and the Laconia Board of Education regarding fiscal years 2018 through 2022 as presented tonight, and to authorize the mayor to sign that document on behalf of the city council.
So moved by Counselor Bounds.
Is there a second? Counselor Bolduc, second's the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? We have five yes votes, one no vote. Motion carries. Okay. Page 55, proposed change to the employee wage and compensation plan. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's one change that's outlined for you this evening, and that's to the Assistant Department of Public Works Director. I know you're all aware that Luke Powell is retiring at the end of this month. The city did go out and advertise the position and updated, made some updates to the job description as well. This, this job description has always required that the person be a professional engineer. And we went out and we advertised, in this economy with this construction market, engineers are a very challenging commodity to find right now. And we're hearing that from firms across the state as well as other municipalities. So we looked at the response that we had. We looked at our, our pay scale. We looked at what other communities who had recently hired a similar type position were doing in order to be competitive. And we're recommending that we raise it from a grade 23, where it's listed as Assistant Department of Public Works Director. That position would no longer exist. We would move it up to a grade 25, Assistant Department of Public Works Director slash City Engineer, and the corresponding pay grade, where you can see at a top step under the current classification is at $70,000. At a top step under the proposed classification will be $80,000. We think that'll help us in the pool of applicants that we receive. One thing Paul has brought to my attention too, and it's not for tonight, but somewhere down the road, what has happened in the past, even prior to my being here, is when we might have adjusted a classification or the higher end has moved up because of a COLA reflected to the schedule, we've never kind of dropped off the bottom or raised the minimum to lose that. So when we advertise this position, we're advertising Assistant Director of Public Works, who's overseeing our whole Sanitary Sewer Fund, and we're advertising a range as low as $49,000. So what we want to do is bring that up, and over the years, when those classifications had have adjustments due to cost of living adjustments, raise up the bottom ones. When we advertise, the range may be more in the line of $55,000 to $70,000, or $65,080, because that may be hindering some of the response we get on all jobs, not just that one. People look at it and say, wow, I could apply that, and if they started me at the lowest level of the pay grade, I could be working for, you know, that amount. I'm making more than that where I am right now. Why would I, why would I apply? So that's a bigger item that we're going to go through and bring you something comprehensive. But it's basically not to reclassify new positions, it's to adjust that lower end to more accurately reflect where we should be today. So for today, the only request is the Assistant Department of Director, Assistant Department of Public Works Director slash City Engineer, new position, replacing just the Assistant DPW Director, and placing it at a grade 25.
Questions or comments before we get to motions? Okay. Motion be in order to approve the change to the wage and compensation plan as presented by the city manager, notably to reclassify the Assistant DPW Director from grade 23 to grade 25, and change the title of the position from Assistant DPW Director or to Assistant DPW slash City Engineer. Do we have that motion? Counselor Bolduc, is there a second? Counselor Doyle, second's that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We're on to really important business now. Page 57, the unlicensed dog warrant for 2017, which I think I have right here, and requires the signature of each member of city council. So a motion would be in order to, to issue the warrant for unlicensed dogs as presented. Anyone care to make that motion? Counselor Bounds has the honor. A second? Nope.
I don't want to put dogs in jail.
Anyone else? Anyone second the motion, please? Counselor Libman, second's the motion. All right. Very controversial motion here. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the warrant as presented, please raise a hand. Any, oh, she did vote this. All right. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. If you'll sign that and pass it on, and get that to the city clerk. Now comes the fun part. First reading of proposed fiscal year 2018 budget resolutions, and a request to schedule a public hearing on June 26 during the regular city council meeting. Okay. So the first motion in order is to schedule a public hearing for the fiscal year 2018 municipal budget for June 26, 2017, during the city, regular city council meeting, which begins at 7:00 PM. Someone care to make that motion, please? Counselor Hamel will make that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Doyle, second's that motion. Hold on. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of scheduling the annual municipal budget public hearing for June 26, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries.
Before you start reading these and going right through, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
All right. Under the Tax Increment Financing District Downtown, there's two papers, which is, what are those two? One says $194,000, and one says $54,000. Just so that I know what it is, what I'm voting on right off.
The downtown one is the $194,000. I think the Weers Tiff one is the $54,000.
Well, it says downtown, so... On mine?
Which page are you looking at, Counselor?
Page 67. Am I reading that wrong, too?
Finance District Weers?
67, mine says downtown.
Anybody else have that?
Mine says Weers.
Mine says Weers.
Oh, he's pointing right there. Says in the actual upper...
Okay.
Yep, yep. The second line, yeah.
Good catch, Counselor. So yes.
What are you pointing to?
Totally right.
There you go.
You get to ride the bull later on tonight. I'm going.
What did he point to?
So this is the Weers?
The second one has downtown on it, where the first bold above it on page 67 says Weers, which is the correct one. So administratively...
Oh, okay.
So on page 67, if you look at the second bolded part...
Further down.
Oh, down, okay. That should say Weers.
Yep.
Good catch, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Are we ready to take a deep breath and get through these?
I don't know.
Nine to read. This is my, my favorite time of the year. This is so exciting.
You're good at it.
All right. So we need to pass on first reading tonight, nine different resolutions here relative to the budget. First is Resolution 2017 dash 08. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Resolved by the city council as follows, that the following itemized appropriations be made for the fiscal year beginning July 2001, I mean, July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Grand total appropriation of $67,75,381, less total revenues of $28,148,341, leaving a balance to be raised by taxes of $38,927... Someone care to make that motion, please? Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor of passing?
Does this include the school as well as the city, right?
Yes.
Everything.
The grand total of general fund appropriation. Yes. Includes the county also.
Everything.
Everything. All right. All those in favor of adopting the resolution on first reading, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Five votes in the affirmative, one, one no vote. Motion carries. Next up is Resolution 2017 dash 09. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for anticipated grants for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Be it resolved that the following itemized appropriations be made for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Anticipated grants of a grand total of $1,386,901, less total revenues of the same amount, Someone move that resolution? Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval on first reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. We're on to Resolution 2017 dash 10. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Be it resolved that the grand total appropriation for the water fund will be $2,081,065, less total revenues of the same exact amount, plus capital reserve projects of $590,400. We have a motion by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. We're on to Resolution 2017 dash 11. Relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District, Financing District Lakeport for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Be it resolved that the grand total appropriation is $4,649, less total revenues of the same amount, $4,649. Moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Bounds. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. We're on to Resolution 2017 dash 12. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Downtown for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Be it resolved that the grand total appropriation is $194,600, less total revenues of the same amount, $194,600. Counselor Bear, would you like to make this motion?
Sure.
And seconded by Counselor Libman, since we're talking about downtown here. Any discussion? All those in favor of the downtown Tiff resolution, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. We're getting there. Resolution 2017 dash 13. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the sewer fund.
Doesn't make any sense.
I'm going to ask why the Tiff district ones are split up, but I won't go into that. A resolution relative to, to making itemized appropriations for the sewer fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Resolved that the grand total appropriation for the sewer fund is $3,721,116, less total revenues of the same amount, $3,721, and three, so let me try again, $3,721,116, plus a capital outlay of $1,396,500. Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion of Resolution 13? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Resolution 14. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Internal Services Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Resolved the grand total appropriation for the Internal Any discussion of Resolution 14? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that resolution is adopted. Two more. A resolution relative to...this is Resolution 15. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Special Revenue Fund Motorcycle Week for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and terminating June 30, 2018. A grand total appropriation of $179,749, less revenues of the same amount, $179,749. Counselor Hamel, would you like to make that motion?
Sure.
And seconded by Counselor Bullock. Any discussion of Resolution 15? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. And lastly, Resolution 16. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Weers for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and terminating June 30, 2018. Resolved. A grand total appropriation of $54,929, less total revenues of the same amount, $54,929. Moved by Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. Six votes, the affirmative, and that resolution is adopted as well. Thank you for your patience. I guess we have to do that one more time.
Yep.
In July, I have to rest up.
Title only if you take that vote.
You what?
You can do it by title only if you take that vote prior to it.
On the second reading? Oh, okay.
I do that.
I'm going to remember that.
Do that.
Okay. That finishes new business. We have no scheduled unfinished business. We have one item under nominations, elections, and appointments, and one other item that I'd like to quickly add to that same category. You have a memorandum on page 68 of your packet noting that a representative from the Public Works Department traditionally serves on the Highway Safety Commission and has been vacant since the retirement of Paul Moynihan. So we are now in a position to move to appoint Public Works Director Wes Anderson to the Highway Safety Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2020. Someone care to make that motion? Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bullock. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, and that is done. And one other appointment I need to make real quickly. This is a mayor's appointment. We have a vacancy on the Human Relations Committee that the mayor appoints and due to the retirement of Police Chief Chris Adams. And so tonight, I'm going to appoint our new chief, Matt Canfield, to serve on that committee as a representative of the Police Department. So he is now officially a member of the Human Relations Committee. I'd also like to advise the city council that there's a bit of a controversy brewing relative to the Human Relations Committee that could at some point make it to the city council. So I'm just kind of giving you a heads up that there is a...that committee has been more officially organized now in holding regular quarterly meetings and such and keeping minutes and posting public records and all that stuff that it has not done in the past. And the next meeting is on the 20th at 3:00 PM, I believe in the conference room behind is 200B. That's where the last one was, if anyone is interested. And at the last meeting, last quarterly meeting, a group of citizens that numbered probably five in total came to that meeting to protest, if you will, some of the workings of the Human Relations Committee and ask for changes and an opportunity to present their side of the issue, I guess you could say. And I've sort of been keeping up with this secondhand because there's lots of emails flying around back and forth and requests for records and, you know, that's minutes and official documents and that sort of thing. So I don't know a group of people...a number of individuals who were part of and in addition to that same group came to the Martin Luther King Day celebration that the Human Relations Committee annually holds in January. And they participated in that meeting, but they quite...and everything was fine. They were very polite and there were no issues. But they strenuously, I would say, objected to the subject of the meeting and the content of the meeting and wished to have the future meetings and whatnot. I think I'm paraphrasing here, but as I understand it, they think a more balanced view of the world needs to be put forward at these meetings and whatnot. And the program for that particular meeting was a panel discussion that featured two or three Muslim individuals, one of whom was a cleric. And they had a question and answer format, asking and answering from the audience, asking and answering questions about the Muslim faith and that sort of thing. And anyway, these folks objected to that and still object to it, thinking that a spin is being put on that issue that is unbalanced and they would like to see a more balanced presentation. So given the makeup of the long...most of the people on that committee are longtime members of that committee or have been associated with that committee from day one and I think are unlikely to change course of action and whatnot. So there's some...since this is officially a city committee, there's a possibility that that protest could spill over at some point in time to city council. So I'm just giving you a heads up if that possibly could happen in the future. Okay? And if anybody else has any questions about it or whatnot, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But that's really at the...I think it's fair to say the Muslim faith is at the heart of this issue is what's being protested. Okay. Counselor...
So the objection was that the focus of the Martin Luther King Annual Celebration was inappropriate or...
Yeah, I think it was twofold. One, that it was inappropriate that that particular event should focus on the Muslim faith and asking questions and whatnot and comments about the Muslim faith, that it was inappropriate for the occasion, Martin Luther King's birthday, and that's a matter of opinion certainly. And secondly, that they thought that the purpose of the event was clearly to be sympathetic to the religion in general and the people who hold that religion in particular, and that a balanced view of the situation was not presented.
Interesting. Okay.
Direct as I can put it, I think.
Yeah. I think I understand.
Counsel comments? Counselor Bullock?
Yes, Mayor. I...last Friday, it was a rainy afternoon, so I had some time. And I said, what am I going to do today in the afternoon? And I happened to run across this letter that got in the mail from the Pleasant Street School where the children were going to come go to the fire station and put on a little program down there. So I went. And it was just a wonderful thing to see and listen to those kids sing, the way they sang and the way they cooperated and everything. It was just amazing. I couldn't believe how these kids, and there was, I think, 50 of them there, they sang these songs. They were just unbelievable. So I would just like to thank the person that put this thing on, and that was Mr. Fortia, who works there at the school and put this program together for all these kids to go to the fire station and perform there. And it was just absolutely wonderful.
Great.
So I want to thank the...
Thank you for attending and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, that was great.
That's great. Any other counsel comments? No? No need for a non-public session tonight, Counselor. Praise the Lord.
Move if we adjourn.
Actually, we have a new way of doing things tonight.
Oh.
I am...the mayor has been given broad new powers by the city clerk, and I am allowed to just say that in lieu of any objection, this meeting is adjourned.
I'll buy that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Sweeping new powers.
Yes.